How long is it gonna, how long is it gonna be there before she opens?
Well, last evening she made the comment of probably a good month, but her permit is good for one year. She had to finish her fire suppression system and go through some inspections and she felt it'd probably be a good month, is all.
We'll approve this one at a time, so, oh, now then.
Um, I just wanted to clear up because I see you still have question on your face. Um, it is a busy corner right there, but she said that she is going to be doing walk-up business only, so there won't be the line of traffic. They will have to find places to park legally and then come up to the food truck and get food. So it shouldn't be as busy um with the traffic parking instead of all trying to kind of cram themselves in there.
To add to that, I feel it's gonna be no different when she does open because there'll be that many vehicles that'll have to find a place to park to walk up into her business. So it's probably a good trial and airtime to get started. And earlier she did uh, she did work out of her parking lot um with a a temporary food permit. And when she did that, she did a lot of business and there was no complaints that we heard. So that's why with all this discussion, we had decided it would be okay to approve.
Yes, my opinion, another business on Main Street right now is not probably a bad thing. I make a motion to approve. The motion to approve the recommendation of the planning zoning committee is their second, again, the second. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Our next uh order of business was a conditional use permit, and this is for Carol Mauer Ragamuffins Ranch daycare. The piece of property they're looking at is zoned highway commercial. And in a highway commercial, there is not an allowance for a daycare, daycare center, daycare of any sort. So to put it on that piece of property that she's looking at, she had to come before us looking for a conditional use permit. Now, this piece of property is directly behind to the east of the Dollar General. And it goes from Ninth Avenue to the Highway Right-A-Way ditch. And the only access to the end of the property is off from the Ninth Avenue little leg that takes you into either Dollar General or north up to that housing area. We thought this was a fit for that property and for, for uh a good use of a conditional use permit, so we made a motion to approve her conditional use permit to put her daycare on that property. Yes, you have to motion.
I'll second. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
And I'm just curious. Why did you think it was a good idea?
It's
You've got kids out there on the highway.
Well, her, her backyard, if you want to put it, has to be fenced, so no kids can get out. If, if a child is out of the building, they have to be within this fenced area. The only time they wouldn't be in that fenced area is when mom and dad pull into the parking lot in the front of the building and take them into the building. That's the only time they would not be protected by a fence. But when they're in the daycare's supervision, if they go out of the building, they will be in that fenced area. So there's no way a child could run to the, to the highway or to the Dollar General or or anyplace else. They'd have to be within that fence if they're outside.
The property owners don't, are fine with it?
We heard zero negative comments.
Okay.
Um, just a little tidbit of information. When, when a conditional use is done, um, the person applying, in this case, Ms. Mauer, had to go to Amanda and Ma- Amanda draws a map with a hundred and fifty foot radius. And everybody within that hundred and fifty foot radius has to be notified by certified mail. And it has to be published in the paper twice. And you have the right to call into City Hall, write in, show up in person. It's a public hearing. I mean, it's everybody has the right to speak during it, and there was absolutely nobody that objected to this through the whole process.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Our last order of business was the mailbox ordinance. This is quite a uh quite a, an item of quite discussion. Uh, after last meeting, uh, our last meeting, we met with the city attorney. He was present. He gave us his opinions on a lot of stuff. We looked it over. Some of the things that wanted to be in there, there's no sense putting them in because the postal service will override the city and the city council at, at any time they want to. So if, if you ask for a mailbox and the post office says, put it right there, and the city says, no, you can't, that person has the right to go to the postal service and the postal service says, you will put it there. And the city loses the discussion. With that, I think there's a lot of better things that we can have Amanda do than be in the mailbox police. So we're trying to figure out what to change and how to change it properly and make it so that everybody's happy, including Amanda, planning and zoning the city council. So with that, we tabled it for more discussion and more wording.
We have to table it, so, bring it back to me already.
Okay, with that, that's all we had from last evening unless you guys got any comments or questions. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. On his own administration administrator report.
Good evening. Uh, I don't know what to call him. Mr. Mayor, can I just call him Mr. Mayor?
You can call him Chad.
Chad and, hey, and council members. Uh, as you can see, we have a very short list. Uh, we did have one backyard fence, the middle one playground with fence sidewalks and curb line. That is the play place for the Pursuits daycare that they have started on. They did their pour uh for curb line and the front sidewalk today. Um, and then over here on Second Street Southwest, there was a couple of gravel driveways that they are deciding to uh cement before the winter comes. And then we just have our special event mobile food, food permit that was for a couple of weeks back. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
You're getting a lot easier tonight.
Nice. I feel like they're studying them though.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept her report.
Motion to accept the administrative report.
The motion is their second, again. Kirk.
Kirk.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Montreal County Job Development Authority.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Aaron Parker. I'm here on behalf of Montreal County JDA. And we are doing, currently doing some outreach amongst all the communities of Montreal County, the organizations, councils, et cetera. Uh, our purpose is to kind of either inform or reinforce, because I'm sure many of you are already aware of many of our programs, of what we do offer and what we're trying to get out the word amongst all the residents and the people. Uh, first of all, the, the mission of what we're trying to do is to grow Montreal County's quality of life and to do this through enhancing economic opportunity, promoting growth and development uh by providing guidance and resources to entrepreneurs and communities. Uh, we have three main programs that we're trying to do this through. The first is the Horizon Grant. It's a small grant for, for profits and small projects. The second is our community grant, which is kind of a larger amount of money that we can pull from. And the third is the Growth Fund. Uh, for the Horizon Grant, last year, the JDA paid out $160,000 for 19 small applicants. Uh, these support for-profit small businesses as well as community projects amongst the county. Uh, there is a $10,000 cap and it is a matching grant. Uh, however, some of the examples of stuff that we've put out are Main Street Planters through some of our commercial clubs, uh, Public Benches down in Newtown, Trash Cans Impartial. Uh, I think a small business here in Stanley was Cable Ninja that we provided some support for him to go out and try to get a patent, as well as the Stanley Parks Department on doing some of their, their programs. The next program that we have is the Community Grant. Uh, last year gave out over $350,000 worth of support to the community. Uh, it supports mostly nonprofit, although there is provisions for some for-profit businesses. One example being our last round, the Ragamuffins Daycare, we were able to support them quite substantially and try to get them off the ground. There's really no monetary limitations or cap as of now. Uh, so that's mostly to encourage all applicants to come to us. Let us know what your project ideas are and see if we can help in some way or form. Mostly what we're looking to do for that is projects that be our most immediate workforce challenges in the county, which are going to be daycares, uh, housing projects, and anything that would be in the medical field. But it is also open for entrepreneurs, businesses to start up and uh already pre-existing businesses that may have some, some projects that need assistance with. Uh, like I mentioned, Ragamuffins is something that we've helped with. The Pursuit Daycare is another program that we were able to assist with. And uh the Civil Center just across the street is another thing that we were able to provide some assistance for there. Lastly, we have the Growth Fund, which is a fund that we provide at a 1% fixed rate with a 10-year term. Uh, this is, it serves new and existing businesses that uh kind of need existence, or excuse me, access to capital. We may even be able to help in some instances where these businesses may not be able to get a loan through other existing means. So we just want to kind of put that out there. That might be something we can assist with. Some key guidelines to kind of keep in mind are all applicants must be located in Montreal County because we want local dollars to stay in the local community and we want to promote growth within our own communities. It must provide benefit to Montreal County and/or its residents. Generally, the projects must be ready to start within three months and be finished within 12 months, although there are some exceptions that can be made with board approval. The next deadline for application is 30 September, so we're really kind of trying to get out and let you folks know and perhaps spread by word of mouth that this is something that if people are interested in, to please contact us, give us a call, give me an email, go to our website, click the button, whatever they want to do, uh, because we're interested in, in helping out there. So that's all I have for now to try to keep it quick with the, with the AC doing what it's doing. But I'm hoping for any questions, comments, or concerns. Right?
I, I just commented the JDA is a fantastic organization in the area. I myself was able to work through JDA program to get into my new building and it's couldn't have done it without help, so.
Appreciate that. All right, well, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and I'll do my best to help any of you all. Thank you.
Visitor Committee.
Good evening, everyone, council members. Uh, Visitors Committee met this week. We had two applications, one from the Flicker Tail Village for a requested amount of $61,949 for um the purchase of a mower. Um, we didn't have a lot of discussion on this. Um, normally we don't support machinery and equipment and things like that. It's more events and whatnot, but beings that Flicker Tail brings a lot of visitors to the community, it was kind of a no-brainer for the committee to um recommend an approval and we rounded it up, so we recommended approval of $6,200. And our second application was from the North Dakota Equine Association uh for the Cowboy Festival, the end of September with a requested amount of 3,000. We have supported this in past years. It does bring a lot of visitors to the community. And we recommended approval for this application as well, for the full 3,000. And that was all.
Any questions of Brandy? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Visitor Committee recommendations. So, motion to approve is their second. Second, the second, is there any discussion?
Yes, yep. They priced it out at Tractor Supply and that's the price they got. I would imagine it's got the beggar, it's got everything with it. Um, I, and I'm not 100%. We're speculating on the fact that I don't, they don't own a mower. So they've used volunteers' mowers, so it'd be you or me or anybody that's helping with um the upkeep of it. Yep. We had one of our, one of our committee members is a John Deere salesman. I mean, he was their parts manager, I guess. I don't know if it's actually his title, but he's, he felt, he thought it was a little high for that, that amount too, but with, if it's got the beggars and the attachments and everything. Um, so we weren't going to question the fact that they got this quote from a local uh business and yeah, right, absolutely. That I don't think so. I don't think they have to because they're not in a municipality, correct?
Correct. And I can add some light to it as I do sit on the Flicker Tail board. Um, they did check around and the equivalent mower, whether it be a Grasshopper, whether it be the John Deere Zero Turn through John Deere, they were all somewhere around 12,000 and above for the same size of mower. And the goal was to buy a Zero Turn mower owned by Flicker Tail so that the volunteers weren't bringing theirs out and to buy it locally. So that was how that came about.
Yeah. I personally bought one not too long ago and it was, I don't have a beggar or anything on it, anything special, and mine was over 5,000. And I did, I didn't buy it locally, but I do buy most of my things locally, so it, yeah, and you look at some of the, the um Grasshoppers, I mean, they're, they're 10 at least on a basic, basic model. So.
Any other discussion? Lynn, would you please call the roll?
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
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 Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Uh, next item on the agenda is Stanley Park District. Get a hear from Brandy one more time.
Be up here all night, everybody. No kidding. Um, I don't exactly know what update you want other than where we're at financially. I know originally we had thought about coming to ask for um the last um pay order, but we backed off on that. We paid it ourselves. So at, right now, currently, the total paid for the pool is at 4.18 million. Um, the city, we've loaned 2.78 million. I mean, rough figures, if you want, exact, I have them. Um, and we, the park district has paid the 1. almost 4 million ourselves. So um status-wise, I don't know if any of you saw the trailer in the park in the last couple of days with the frog slide. We knew it wasn't going to get here on time. We knew we would, because the timing that we ordered it and it would, it takes some production time and whatnot. So we did just receive that. I would think it would be installed within the next couple of days. We've had some pump issues and it's been a kind of a hassle between the um the installers versus the engineers as to are pumps working, functioning the way they're supposed to be functioning. So there's a change order to do some different um kind of troubleshooting with the pumps and that's kind of where we're at. I mean, I think we had a pretty successful season. Cassie could probably um attest to that a little more than myself or the board members, but um I think all in all, it was a pretty, pretty good summer, kickoff summer for a new pool.
So is there, do you still have some retainage on that to where there's?
Yeah, I think, I want to say it's like 110%, 115%. Yeah, 117,000 retainage.
That's still.
Yes.
But we
We are.
Pump issues taken care of.
And we've had some concrete concerns, some major concrete concerns. We, the concrete company, they've, they had two different companies associated, did like the area around the splash, right immediately around the splash pad. And then we had another concrete company do the rest of it, like outside the pool area and like majority of the pool deck. Um, they have come and looked at it. They agree. There's issues. We're going to leave it for the winter, see what happens over the winter and then most likely they'll be coming in next spring to redo some concrete work because it's if they don't agree, if they didn't agree to do it, we would be doing it ourselves in another two years, some of the concrete. So that was a big issue, but I think we've gotten, we've come to agreements with the contractors that um it's an issue and they, they acknowledge it anyway, so.
So all pay-ups under, outstanding there?
Yes, everything's taken care of.
Just that 10%.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that was the main question last month when we saw that last
300 and, yeah.
Request and it's like, wow, I don't know. One, we can't pay it because there wasn't that much left in the loan amount.
Mm-hmm.
But second of all, we knew that you guys were having some
Issues, yeah.
It's like, wow, we better not pay this till we know that they're happy with the thing.
Yeah. And there's still some things that we'd like to see different, of course. I mean, I think when they built City Hall, things were, there was issues, there was problems, there was nothing that comes out of a commercial set project like that is a-okay. So um there are some things, some kinks, of course, that need to be worked out, but we're um, we're, where we think we need to be, I think, as a board and on our side of things, I guess.
Okay, appreciate the report.
Yeah.
Any other questions of Brandy? Park Board. Okay, uh, next line item, liquor license for the Mainstay Hotel. I believe it's in front of you.
Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Risha Patel and I'm right now general manager at the Mainstay with Thai Yoga. And uh my boss, like my company, they are purchasing the Mainstay at Stanley at the October 1st. So we requested for the liquor license. Uh, so my boss is, he's from the Wisconsin. So at, when we purchased the Mainstay with Thai Yoga, they applied the liquor license from Wisconsin. Uh, and right now I'm staying at the, uh, like in the Thai Yoga, so I'm not the local in Stanley. So if you, I mean, uh, if you allow us for the liquor license, so that really appreciate for us.
Does this, this require somebody to live locally, correct?
Most generally, yes. We, I mean, we do have a couple, you know, that are kind of been grandfathered, but that is a requirement that they are supposed to have a local general manager. That is why I told him when I, we got the call this afternoon that he should probably be here to address the council because that would be left at your guys' discretion if you're going to allow him to, you know, be the general manager even though he doesn't live here in Stanley. And the reason for this is obviously Mainstay already currently has a liquor license, but they're purchasing it, which would take effective as of October 1st. Um, but they will not retain the same corporation. It will be in a different corporation, which is why it required to have a, a new liquor license application.
Do they currently have a local person sitting out there as general manager now?
Well, they did, but I'm guessing I don't know if there is change of staff. I mean, as of the liquor license that was approved, yes, they did have a general manager at the time. Unless that has changed and the city was not informed of that.
Uh, so right now this hotel is uh under management company. It's called the New Leaf Hospitality. So when we purchased the hotel, so we are not go with the management company. So we will run by ourselves.
It seems to me that that liquor ordinance, when I had mine, they had changed it that because the west side at one time had an owner on Williston and they had Jack Wing run it. They have made it. So we had to have a manager living in Stanley, had to have his name on the license. You couldn't be an owner someplace else like Williston or wherever they're, Wisconsin, and have the ownership of that license. You still own it, but it has to be in the person's name to have it in their name. That's what it was. Now, whether it got changed or not, I don't know.
I believe that's how it still is.
Yeah, I mean, I know like on the renewal application, I mean, it states that yes, you have to be a bona fide citizen of the United States and it asks about if there's any delinquent taxes, specials, et cetera. You know, and then it asks you, of course, how long you've been a citizen of the United States. I don't know if it directly asks about if you're local, but I mean, we do have on there that they, you have to list the owner and if the owner doesn't live in Stanley, then the general manager has to be listed with their social security number and date of birth as well. Well, in that way too, if something ever comes up in the police department, has to go, you know, to visit with that establishment, there's someone on site that they can deal with.
Comments, Ryan?
No, I, I, I think you gotta follow the law and if it is, you need to have someone that's lives here.
Okay, I'm living in Thai Yoga, so probably, yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I really appreciate it then.
Thanks.
Okay, so sorry, just for clarification, are we just going to table this until they can?
Motion to table until they find a local manager.
Yeah, there's a motion to table liquor license request until a manager is found that lives within the city of Stanley. There's a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess I have one comment. So obviously if they take over effective as of October 1st, that means the current liquor license will become null and void.
Correct.
So just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yep. Oh, no problem. So there's a motion, second on the floor. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next line item we got is agreement of special assessments and waiver of irregularity and appeal.
Okay, so this, this actually was a different form when Bros had presented it. We had the attorneys review it and obviously between them and our bond counsel, we did do some modifications. Sorry, excuse me. And since this we've gotten this form, there's kind of been other requests, not just for water and sewer lines, service lines, but for like removing trees, uh, adding on to their driveway apron, uh, extension of an existing sidewalk or portion of a sidewalk they're doing and they just want to extend it out. And I did discuss it with both Ryan and Marley and we thought it would be best to have it on the agenda to see if, how the council wants to proceed with this, if you're going to be willing to allow for additional things besides water and sewer service lines to be assessed at their expense, obviously, but.
So can I, can I, so um, one of the things that is, there's a tree that's not even close to where they're doing the work and they want to have the company, one of the construction companies, remove that tree. And then they want to add it to their specials, right? And so where are we? Go ahead.
Just a slight clarification. It is in the boulevard where they're doing their work. The issue was that three of the trees they had out of the four had to be removed and they said, I don't want one tree sitting around. Can we take down the fourth? And they want that done as part of the project and special assess as well. And that's kind of where this came about. And I know we got a lot of those requests on the first phase of the sidewalk, a lot more of kind of sidewalk. And I know we got a lot of those requests on the first phase of the sidewalk, a lot more of kind of sidewalk repair and making sure they're getting. The gaps where we're not doing the sidewalk and trees as well where they don't want to leave with. Nah, with one tree where they previously had a whole boulevard full. I just wanted to make the one clarification. This isn't something like back in their backyard or in their yard. It, it's right up there. It is. In line with where the other ones are being removed.
And that changes it now, cuz we were concerned if you're gonna start removing trees and add it to your specials, you're starting to become a bank for. For individuals and so that chain, that, that would be different. Um, so that's my take now that he clarified on that, so.
If it is, I guess in my opinion, if it's potential impact from the project in the boulevard per se. Then I don't see a problem with that. Methodology that what you guys have here, but like you said, Ryan, if it's in the backyard or if it's in the side lot and. It's just a nuisance tree and they wanna, then no, we're, we're definitely not a bank. We're not gonna fund there.
Okay, so now.
Improvement.
What about the case of the sidewalk? So they're obviously replacing. The contractor's actually replacing. Patrick, I'm being the middle man here. You come.
So the sidewalk requests we typically get are. Where we are placing a patch at their driveway and maybe their house on the corner or something, so we're placing by the ADA ramp and then you're replacing. The panels where they're watering sewer to tie in. And a lot of times that leaves them with one to two panels that aren't being replaced. And there's a lot of homeowners who don't wanna leave their sidewalk outside their house. With two panels that look odd out from the rest of all their sidewalk. And so sometimes they ask if they will replace it. This is a lot more common in the first phase. We also had a lot more house in the first phase and a lot less of the sidewalk had to be replaced in the first phase cuz there wasn't as much up against the. The street where it's tied in with the curb, but. It is something to kind of forward plans for that. I guess the question is, would those also be covered or the city be willing to cover those through special assessments? The homeowner requests it.
You know, when we walked through and looked at it, we picked. Like you said, if, if the panel was impacted or if it was damaged or if it was beyond. It's normal use life, if you will, that it would be replaced and it would be part of the special assessment district. Now on the panels, uh, what, when we looked at them, that looked. Good, they weren't cracked, they weren't chipped, the corners weren't broke out of them. They were the same width as what was being put back in. We chose not to replace them to keep our costs down. And, and that was the reason why we chose not to replace it was so that we didn't pass on. An unneeded expense to the taxpayer for an extra hundred feet of sidewalk on every city block, if you will. You know, I mean, because they don't like the look of it. I don't see that that should be part of the project.
And sometimes it's not the look, sometimes the homeowner has a different feeling than you and I did when we were out there looking at it and they feel it. It is bad enough to need replacing. They see it as old and decrepit in their eyes, you know? It's a subjective process, sometimes looking at these and citing what needs to be repaired and what's not.
Part of the project or do they wanna pay for those panels themselves at a hundred percent through the special assessment?
We've had both come up. This form would allow them to pick. And so that's kind of what the question becomes cuz there is pain for themselves. We don't need to go through this rigmarole. The question really becomes if they're gonna be allowed to special assess as part of the process, project. Cause I will say probably the most common comment I've heard talking to homeowners and I get it. I was getting it when we were doing a lot of these free talks, probably. Every single time was why isn't the entire sidewalk being replaced? And I have to go through that discussion, kind of like you just talked about, about it is. The thing that's gonna drive up the cost of the project the quickest, that concrete is expensive. And so it lasts, so if you can keep it, we try and keep it. But a lot of people don't look at it and immediately think that way, that they haven't kind of dealt with it before. No, I haven't yet.
I don't know, I guess, I mean, our, our job as a council is to manage the project and keep the prices low as. We possibly could for the taxpayers in those special assessment districts. Uh, in my opinion, if they wanna pay for it, all on their own to replace them two panels and. I've had her pay for it, but I don't think that we wanna start adding all that on the back end of a project because it's gonna, it's gonna do a couple things. It's gonna obviously cost more for the concrete, the concrete labor, but it's also gonna end up raising. Everything else, the engineers fees, that'll all be in there. There's probably a cost plus from the contractor side.
It won't increase engineering fees. We don't inspect any of this additional work.
Okay.
Because that's the homeowner's contract with the contractor and we're not. We have no contract with the homeowner. We only have a contract with the city.
So what's the change order?
The.
Cost with the contractor.
I don't think anyone's even pursued it on this project or more future planning. This was a big deal in the first project. I think there's been some people have asked about it, but then they never pursued it on this project. Um, there might be one person who is looking to pursue it, I know, but they haven't done so yet.
My opinion is if it wasn't in the plan that we paid Rose to establish for us, then. The replacement's on wholly on the homeowner. If it's part of the plan, then it's easy. It's in the special assessment district. Everybody gets to share in the cost of it. That's just my two cents. What do you, rest of you?
I guess I agree with you also.
So what do you want us to tell you?
No, I think I've gotten the kind of guidance we need that I can pass on to homeowners and they ask is water and sewer lines and. Things there in the boulevard in essence, like trees that you're looking to remove. But outside of that, big requests such as concrete are on your own.
Same with the driveway apron.
Oh.
Sorry, that was the other one that came up. I'm just trying to make sure everything.
We did allow the driveway thing in the first phase, so I believe, my opinion, we have to. We still have to honor it.
And the driveway apron doesn't increase cost the same way that the concrete does because. It's, it's not like you're doubling the amount of concrete you need to double the width of a driveway. It's just not how it works. You end up needing slightly less than that and you're generally already paying for a piece of that widening anyway through the sidewalk that's behind it. You're gonna have to replace anyway. So much of it's already included. So you have a much smaller change and a lot of times people wanna double their driveway. They've already told us in the design phase and this time we actually had those all except one or two, I think, calculated into the design plans. So you get a very small portion of them that increase it very slightly compared to sidewalk.
I guess I feel to stay in line with District One or the first phase of this. Project that we're in the middle of now. We have to be parallel to that. We, we did a lot on driveway apron. Like Patrick said, I don't remember, don't remember any sidewalk stuff.
I think there was in the first phase, but there hasn't been on this phase, the second one.
Okay, Amanda.
Are these still in the works? Because I haven't seen any building permits come in. So if they're, if they're replacing sidewalk, no, but if they're widening their driveway, the homeowner needs to be responsible to come in and do.
So one, I believe we talked about, that was one in the design phase we talked about a few months ago. That one, I know. The other two, I kind of told them to reach out to you at City Hall. If they haven't yet, then we're not gonna do it, obviously, but.
Right.
So.
I just know what happened last time was we had very, very last minute permits coming in. Basically, I had a homeowner calling me saying. They're getting ready to do it in like thirty minutes. I need paperwork right now. And they would come up here and basically pay for the permit and it sometimes wouldn't even be approved by then. But I would have talked to you or Donovan or somebody. Knowing what was going on boots on the ground because I wasn't even gonna be able to get over there in time for it to. To see it before it was done.
So, yes, I'm kind of getting to my engineer report now, but just to go on that, uh. We had someone, we did the easements back before the project even began. He has two properties on the project. He doesn't live in town. And he mentioned why those driveways widened. We directed him towards City Hall. Um, I was gonna check with you and see if he had. I guess he is not, so that's, won't worry about those, but. We do.
And I don't want them to not get what they want. If it's been in the design, they just need to. Do a permit, so we're legal. Yeah.
We also.
It's not our job to chase after them and keep asking them if they still wanna do this. If they come in and do it, then. Great. If they don't, we have to make the assumption that they didn't want it. And move forward cuz we're not gonna hold up these guys for.
Right. I just don't wanna cause any unnecessary problems because. Homeowners are gonna be like, well, Patrick said this and I tried, but Amanda never answered or, you know, they'll say whatever they need to. So that it doesn't look like it's them that was at fault.
The last thing I'll say is we are either at the end of this week or beginning of next week, gonna send out a letter all the homeowners again, telling them the concrete work's gonna happen on. Certain days because those days you can't drive over the driveway for about five days. And maybe then they get a reminder and you end up seeing they're getting a call, so I'll stay in contact with you and just make sure and we'll, we'll get sorted out.
That'd be perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Your turn next. Rose Engineering Updates.
Hello again. So, starting off, we'll talk about that fishery project. They've gone all the water and sewer main installed. They're currently rebuilding the road bed. Uh, bringing it up. They got the subgrade in shape and they started putting gravel on today. They should finish it up tomorrow from my conversation with them. And bring in the last six inches. Um, after that, they're kind of waiting for their concrete subcontractor to be ready and they said they're not gonna be ready until the week of the twenty second. So we got about a couple weeks after this road's reshaped and they've cleaned up the area a little bit from their stuff until concrete's gonna come in and start being poured. Um, what I'm looking for you today is to approve the second pay application, which takes them up to, I originally did up to last Friday.
This company has been amazing.
They've done a bang up job.
It's been very good work, very clean work. Any asks that we've had, they've been minor, but they've been on immediately.
I will say, well, I'm really appreciative of how well they have communicated and worked with homeowners, both onsite and in those homeowner meetings. It's been. Really good and I've only heard good things from the homeowners themselves.
Well, I'd entertain a motion to approve pay up two for. This streets up for the street project. So, motion to approve is there a second? There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Here none, I'm Lynn. Please call the roll.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Brandy.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Chad.
Alright.
So looking next is the commercial section of Fifth Street over the post office. We had our pre-con on August twenty eighth. They got started today by putting up signs, bringing in equipment. They're going, or yesterday, excuse me. Uh, tomorrow they're gonna start milling up the streets, um, get those milled together. They're planning on completely finishing Fifth Street this year. And then coming back to put in the underdrain pipe and paving Tammy and Jared at the King of Next Year. That's their preliminary schedule. It is, they warned me it is scheduled to change. They could end up fitting those things in if everything goes well. But that's what the schedule they're giving us for now, just uh, I think kind of temper us, temper expectations. I don't need any action from you guys right now, just kind of letting you guys know where we're at. Um, oh, I will warn you, or it's not warning, I'll inform you that uh. Thursday at nine thirty at our office is gonna be the first homeowner in progress meeting for this project. Um. It's a public meeting, open meeting. Anyone who wants to attend where they're gonna kind of just let us know where they're at and where they're looking to go and. Give people kind of a voice to talk to them and make sure that they're informed. Um, next is the lead service line replacement. Uh, you guys asked us to estimate how many lines there are. Well, I kind of did that by going forward and looking at how many galvanized lead lines we have in total. I believe it was twenty-three. With uh, the responses we received. Um, if you take into account the sections of town, you know, we're built past a certain time and the sections of town that replied. We have about seven hundred some responses, was left about four hundred some unresponded. Just taking a simple percentage of those, we've come out to about thirty-eight lead lines, lead and galvanized lines in the city. Um, I would assume it's a little bit higher than that number because that percentage I'm taking of. The other number includes sections that were built past the time period, you know, the, the numbers I'm using to estimate. So I'd round it up to forty. I attached a map that shows where these lead and galvanized lines are. They're kind of localized into. Select areas and the older areas of town in all reality. Um, I'm not sure how you guys would like to proceed. If you guys need a refresher, I guess, on what the program is that the federal government is offering right now, I. I could give you that or we could just kinda let you guys chat on how you guys think we should move forward.
There's galvanized lines in pine tree addition.
That was what was reported back to us.
The exception of the north end of town, that's the newest, one of the newest parts of town.
You have one up there. Who are what, twenty?
And I will say I threw two out that I knew couldn't be right cuz there was two responses that came in from John Ryan as galvanized. I, knowing that, knowing that they had to be copper or PVC up there, I threw those two out in my percentages. Yeah, part of this is that we are relying on the homeowner's response and some. People have more information on what their line is than others. Some people followed the form and did the magnet test and the scratch test. Some people eyeballed it and said, this looks like this to me. Fortunately, I, I can't, I can't change the quality of information I got. I can only work with the information I got.
When's the drop date on this?
They haven't given one. I think it is one of those programs that they have X amount of money allotted to it. Once it's gone, it's gone. From my talk with our s- state SRF representative, we're not shy in funds here in North Dakota. That for the amount of people and communities we got that they're pretty well funded and have never really had a problem funding a program before and don't expect to hear in the near future.
Quick question. Would it pay to pay? Two homes in six different quadrants where there are no dots within six blocks? And. Take the five minutes and see if they'd let us.
And I think that would be a great idea.
That's something your team could tackle, do you think, Dave, or?
Yeah, I mean, like to look at those galvanized ones, you know, as long as I can galvanize and dirt, it's a good one, I swear.
I mean, I just, I just, and I'm not questioning your numbers. Like I said, you can only work with what's been turned in, but. It's pretty much placed all over town except the complete northeast corner. Which. The oldest part of town.
So personally, what bothered me the most on this map? The area I was most concerned with is the area down Main Street where the residences are cuz there was a water program done in two thousand nine, so the main was replaced. That's before this lead service line program came into law and you had to look at replacing them. So all these people who marked lead only had their line replaced up to the curb stop. So homeowner side, which they have no real chance in the next thirty, forty, fifty years of getting a water, water uh. Project through their street done have lead lines on there. That was where I saw the most concern. Cuz a lot of these other ones that are marked lead are in kind of older sections that are on some phase of our original capital and permit plan.
So you guys, what's your opinion?
So, of course, go take a look.
On to hour two, Dave, there's. You know, maybe help you see a better number. And not that I'm questioning any of them, but. I definite for sure that it's galvanized, that it's copper, that it's lead type of. And we've got the rest of the month.
Sounds good. Okay, so moving on, uh, for that Stanley Phase recap improvement project, which is the sections of our original phase two plan that we did not, uh, go to construction with this year. We kind of brought forward two options. Option one is to do it as an entire eleven or ten and a half block project, which would, we estimate out the cost, which. This should be pretty on point since we're using, uh, kind of middle of the road bids. It has contingency bid in from the numbers that we got this year on our bid prices across our multiple projects. And since we kind of know the quantities, since we went through these pro- this project or this process once. Option two would be split into two separate plans. There's a map attached showing those, but one of them is five and a half blocks. So there's five blocks and nearly. Uh, nearly equal in the split, though they are a little different in the scope due to more sewer on one and more water on the other. Those you'd split into two point eight and two point four respectively. I know there was talk about doing smaller projects. So before we kind of got into the splitting of these plans, we figured it was a good idea to bring it forward to you guys and determine which way you guys would like us to split it.
What?
Talking about here on this.
Um.
What's?
So.
What streets, I guess? Go back to.
Oh, no, we're not over by the swimming pool yet because we got to finish up these other ones that we did the plans for. So we're looking at Fourth Street. The, from sixth Ave to third Ave, the remainder of third Ave that wasn't done in this first or second phase, the remainder of fourth Ave that wasn't done in the first and second phase. Uh, the section of Fifth Avenue from, uh, Fourth Street over to Sixth. Sixth Street as well as the sewer lines running parallel to the highway, uh, just to the east of Sixth Street. Um, there's a map there showing the projects as a whole, and that's the one with the black and green. And then there's a map here with the red and the blue that kind of shows what they look like split off.
Well, this is north of six then.
Yes.
All north of six.
And this is plans we've already completed, but when we bid out the entire project, the cost came in high this year, just because construction costs were high. We decided it was more than we wanted to bite off. We did these three blocks instead, and this is the remainder of that plan set. We're just trying to figure out how to prep the plans, whether we should prep it into one set or two sets.
Nothing south.
Nothing south, yeah.
South of sixth.
Not yet.
What's wrong with? Putting a street in two, wait.
Yeah.
Did it in two packages and bid it in one full package?
At the same time? That's unique. I guess I've never heard of it done that way. The way that you typically kind of do something like that is you bid in schedules. You have bid it, one plant set, you do one bidding. And you'd have two schedules and you guys would approve the schedule separately. What you could end up having is, um, the numbers come in great and you're willing to bite off on both of them, or they could come in high and you say, well, this is a section we want to do more. We're going to approve schedule one and we're going to reject schedule two. And that would be the way you typically go about doing that.
I mean, I'd be fine with that as long as there was two schedules in there, one. And they bid five and a half block and the five block. As two as individually units and then.
You guys can decide at that point.
And if you want, take it all, then call it one billion. Yeah. Take any switch. Try again.
The only risk you run with that is that you might end up getting higher prices than if you bid on one, because someone could sit there and say, I don't have the same guarantee that this project is going to be. X amount of blocks, right? They could be coming into a bidding and their bid price for a ten and a half block project could be different than their bid price for a five and a half pro- block project, but they got bid their worst case scenario, which is you guys throw one project out, right? So you end up with prices that aren't as friendly as if you bid it all on one.
Right. We've, we've been down that road and.
Yep.
We turned them all back and said, try again. And they, every single time came back with a better price.
Fair enough. I'm just kind of giving the risk, the risk and reward structure here.
At the end of the day, we have the final say. If it's too high, it's too high. And like you said, your estimates are going to be. You're hot off the press. I mean, we're in the middle of project currently, two of them and historically two years.
And that being said, I use middle prices from our bid openings here, not our low prices. So that has contingency built in. Assuming inflation and prices going up again this year, the same way last year, and just trying to kind of account for that. That's typically how these go because you get a better price when they know they got more work that they can keep a crew out on the same job longer. But the risk you run on that is if prices come in like they did last year where we're looking at two hundred and sixty feet for a piece of, uh, valley gutter. Then you get high prices and the projects outside of our, uh, willingness to do. Whereas if we do two smaller projects, we can choose which one is. If they come in, uh, with good numbers, then we could do both still, or you could do one if the number's coming high. It gives you more flexibility. So you're taking the risk of e- extra costs for the benefit of flexibility, or you're removing a little bit of flexibility for the benefit of potentially a lower cost.
So I think we wanted to look at this because a larger project might not have been as. You know, within some people's scope. So it kept a lot of people out of the bidding process. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and the thing though with that is. When we scaled down the project, this three blocks, we didn't get any, we got one of the, I would say, you know, smaller guys as they were kind of saying, and they were not competitive still. These larger guys still kind of came in and gave us the, there were three of the largest contractors out here came in and gave us the three lowest prices, you know? Um, and I will say, I know there's already contractors with appetite for the ten and a half block project. It's already been kind of discussed and again, it's those same, you know, the same faces who were there the last time when we did the three block and. So.
Who did any of them? So fine again.
I can't, I can't say that. I don't know whether or not. Their, uh, plan on giving that fee.
It was to be clear, one, one bidder. Actually told us that, well, we had to recoup that somewhere.
Yeah. And that was when we did that first bidding and, uh, for the phase two project and came in, uh, significantly higher than we were expecting. Uh, I do kind of need to know this tonight because I had to fill in the SRF and, uh, SRF forms for the questionnaire, I guess, on the ranking list, and those are due October first. So short of having a special call, I will kind of need some kind of directive tonight, uh, which one to go for. It wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be chained to it, but it's easier if we get it set up correctly the first time.
You said, you know, for sure there's already appetite on the bigger project?
Yes, I know. Uh, at least two, three actually contractors have mentioned kind of appetite for it. I'm sure they would have appetite for the other projects as well. And so. I'm more saying, I think, I know people are willing to look at these projects. We're going to have bidders. It's just which project do we want to do?
I like a little bit of flexibility to be able to. Say we can do five blocks because correctly, we got something coming up in November that. Change some things for us as a city. So, so keep that one in.
When is it? When will they start the project?
Um, we'd be looking to bid it out probably late November, early December for next year construction. Yeah. And part of why we're looking to bid that late is we want, when we go into it, to have knowledge of how that will go. So we're looking to not kind of push any early November bids. That way you guys have all the knowledge at your disposal when you're deciding whether or not to, uh, accept or decline bids.
Yes, I'd make a motion to put it out for. October first. Deadline as a option of five blocks and five blocks.
So often here?
Yeah.
Seems good.
Two schedules.
Yeah. One project, two schedules. Got it.
Yeah, there's a motion to. Approve the two schedule, five and a half block and a five block project, separate plans. Is there a second?
Second.
The second, is there any further discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by I.
I.
Both. Motion carried.
That's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Patrick. Next item on the agenda is gaming permits.
Yeah, three gaming permits in front of you. Um, one, the first one's for the American Lutheran Church for welcome. For a raffle and that would be on September fifteenth. Uh, the other one would be Montrell County Health Foundation, and this would be for a raffle. Which they'd be conducting two different raffles, one on November eleventh and one on June seventh. And the last one would be for the North Dakota Ecoin Association, and it's for a raffle. And they'll be doing it on two days, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Motion to approve the gaming permits.
Motion to approve the gaming permits. There's a second. All those in favor signify by I.
I.
Oppose. Motion carried. Uh, next line item is library board appointment.
So before we'd never really used to, they just. Uh, Kelly would let me know who was changing places on the library board, but I guess now they actually have to. They have to be approved by the city council. And so the newest one would be Susan Hess, Hesslip.
Yep.
So we just need a motion to approve that. Appointment to the library board.
So moved. Motion to accept the. Appointment on the library board of Susan Hesslip. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Was a second, any discussion? Here none. Those in favor signify by I.
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 Oppose. Motion carried. Lynn, looks like you're up.
So the next one, we actually already approved. We have used, uh, council approved it at the July ninth meeting. After having a discussion with Patrick, uh, it sounds like that they would prefer that I be listed as. The one that would authorize to execute and file the application on behalf of the city instead of Patrick. Because I'm more or less listed as the administrator that would take care of everything. So we just would need to amend it to change it to my name instead of Patrick's.
Okay, motion to approve the. Amendment to the resolution of governing body of applicant. So moved. It's motion to approve the amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, any discussion? Here none. Those in favor signify by I.
I.
Oppose. Motion carried. Mr. Chief Litten.
Good evening. I'll make this quick. Um, at the last meeting, we discussed, uh, Officer DeZell being assigned to the school as the school resource officer as a temporary assignment. The school has decided that, uh, they love everything that she's doing. And they are very hesitant about making this a temporary assignment for her. Uh, they want her to stay as long as possible in that position. So I've had a conversation with her. She is willing to stay at least this school year, possibly the next and the next after that. But, um, the school is very excited about everything that she's done and very thankful that, uh, they were able to continue on with that program, that program. Um. We had a new officer, Officer Salinas start today, or I'm sorry, yesterday. Him and Officer Rivers will be attending the academy starting, uh, the twenty-third of September. And they'll graduate right before Christmas, come back, complete FTO and then be cut loose on their own. Just want to give you guys a quick update on the calls for service, arrests and citations for the department. Um, we've been pretty busy. Last year we were busy. So last year we took a total of three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two calls for service. We had two hundred and thirty-four arrests and the department issued eight hundred and forty-four citations. That was last year. We're only in September of this year. So far we have three thousand six hundred and forty-four calls for service. A hundred and ninety-two arrests and nine hundred and eighty-six citations issued. So. Nine hundred and eighty-six. So, um, we're only in September and I don't see this slowing down before the end of the year. So.
What did you say last year was for the year?
On which part? So.
You had nine hundred so far this year. What was last year in comparison?
So nine hundred and eighty-six citations this year. Last year was eight hundred and forty-four.
We got more people in town or just more problems?
Kind of both. And we actually have this time, we, this year, we have been a little bit more staffed than last year. Last year, we were pretty much running with two patrol officers that were out actively. Working. So by having staffing, we have been able to do our jobs. It's all I got.
Okay, any questions of the chief? Thanks, Governor.
Thank you.
Hey. Good evening, uh. I had mentioned you guys about the tar that we had up in the conics. I'm not getting any bites on it. So I'd like to, I have five pallets of it. What I'd like to do is, uh, sell it to Swanson. Not really sell, it'd be a credit for the city. And then next spring, when I need my pallets of tar that I get from Swanson, we'd have that on credit. I've got five pallets, um, they're worth a thousand bucks a piece. We'd have five thousand dollar credit for tar for next year. For how many, uh, tots of tar we went, that's pretty much going to use it right up.
So to be clear, this tar that he's going to trade him is for the.
Sim line.
The old sim line crack catcher that we had, that doesn't work in the new Dura catcher. It's a total different product. This stuff that's, that he's. Asking us to let him trade in is of zero value to us. So if we can give a thousand bucks a pallet in credit. Done deal. Done deal.
Oh, it was, I think, uh, twelve or thirteen hundred. But I, I can't get any bites on it.
I'd make a motion to prove that. A motion to all public works to trade the totes of tar that we have for credit towards next year's tar. There's a second. There's a second. Any other discussion? Here none. Those in favor signify by I. I.
I.
Oppose. Motion carried.
And I had a phone call from the manager of, uh, Holiday or the new Circle K. They're wanting to redo the parking lot, but he asked if the city has talked about, uh, that retention pond behind Cashwise anymore. Or if we had any plans on what we're going to do to, so that drains. Talked to Patrick a little bit about it. Um, it sounded like there was some discussion on it, but it was pretty much tabled.
So what I can remember is it's a, it was a gift to us when Cashwise was built. And accepted virtually a liability. So the pond is there for good. We can't just kind of hole in it, drain it across the field. We looked at putting, uh, French green, if you will, kind of type scenario, a culvert all the way across the airport. And getting it to run down that ditch shop was not feasible at the time. I know, I believe Jeff put together some plans or was it you with some astronomical lift station price?
Whether you take it by gravity or you take it by the lift station, I think the cheapest of it back then was, well, it was as expensive as to walk up there. You should share it with everybody.
Um, in essence, getting it there by gravity or lift station, the cheapest is, I'm remembering, because this is back like twenty eighteen, we were doing this. So it, uh, my memory is trying to go, maybe it's twenty nineteen. But at that time, it was as expensive as basically doing one of these capital improvement projects. You're looking at like five, six million. Now I gotta think. Six or five years later on. It's going to be even higher than that. I mean. Realistically, it's a massive expense to take on to get the water out of there. Your only cheap solution, and cheap is a relative word. Economical solution would be to cut an open ditch trench to get it down to, uh, the road just south of the airport. And then you could, it would drain naturally across. That would be the only economic. That would be the only economical thing you could do. And that's kind of what we did over by the cemetery when we took that drainage ditch next to the Dirty Diesel. We kind of widened it out so that way that culvert system would work better and that worked over at the cemetery. The reality was this is a three stage problem. You had one those up by the cemetery, which was economical to fix. So we did. The other is over by Frontier Village, just south of it near the highway. And then you have the detention pump by the cash wires and all three of those are kind of trouble areas of water. And we were able to fix one of the three back then. The rest are expensive, incredibly expensive to fix and was deemed not worth the expense and money needed to be spent kind of other places at the time.
So what we did talk about was just hiring somebody like New Vera to come in with a hundred horsepower pump. Put some lay flat out, pump it down across the uh truck route by Gary Evans, get it to run over the hill and then just dump into the knife. The pond down there.
Just run in the ditch.
Just run, lay flat the ditch, find a culvert to get it across the truck road and get rid of it. Um, at that time, Dave Mint was on the council and he did come with some prices that were you know, really pretty feasible because it's going to be a one time deal. You pump it out and then you know, depending on the the year, the weather, it could be good for two, three years because there is some evaporation that happens that that's the concept behind it. There is an overflow drain in it. Um, if you were to see the the aerial of it, you would see the land that that pond has impacted that is not ours, that is basically uh made it unusable in some areas. So cutting a ditch across private fields and getting it into the road ditches probably not going to happen because of the easement that we would have to ask for. The only, to me, the only plausible way to get rid of it is just to pump it out, lay flat, get it out of there. It's one of the things that should just never have been accepted. But it it was, and now it's our problem to deal with forever and ever soon.
Chair Chad, may I make, sorry. May I may I make a comment? Okay, so you know, kind of when this come up, I know I did go look at the developers agreement. Nothing is mentioned in there about this retention pond. Um, but obviously on the plat, it's pretty much been dedicated to the city. That's how we ended up with it. And I do know there was previous conversations with like the airport and drainage. I mean, I don't remember how many years we discussed that and that just kind of went to the wayside as well.
Yeah. Top of the ground through the air. This. Private fields that are over there. I guess if I'm not my owner, I'm not giving you a ditch right away to get through production land. So turn the corner and hopefully right now, I don't know if it's running over. I guess I didn't.
I hadn't been back there.
And it is what it is. I guess we're right now. Just tell them that we'll look at it and see where we'll sit in as far as level one.
Okay.
If there's something you need to address before.
Right. And that's all I had. Um, other than we increased that hundred dollar turn on and hundred dollar turn off last meeting. We had zero turn offs after we ran that. That's the first time that the guys can ever remember. We didn't have turn offs. So.
They had zero shut offs this morning. Brian, any updates?
Uh, no.
Okay. Council concerns Kirk.
No.
Jesse.
No.
Ty.
Nope.
Randy. George.
Just a quick update on the emergency management plan.
Uh, okay.
I've spoken with the Church Latter Day Saints of on the north side of town. Uh, for that section division, their meeting is their council to see if that's even an option. Um, and then I have a message into Mr. Holt's at the school to discuss using this two schools as the other two zones.
Okay, so good. It's progress. That is reports going around. Uh, Lynn, you got anything you need added? Anything? Okay, if not, the bills are in front of you. Is there any questions?
So as part of the the water tower, the old water tower. Um, so obviously there's already been a partial bill and then of course that change order for the frost proof vent. So we got a bill in the amount of sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. I guess I'm just wondering what fund we're going to deduct all of this from going forward as well.
All underwater or infrastructure, or we could split it between the two?
Okay, because yeah, I mean, two hundred. Yeah, I think it was a little over two hundred thousand. So I mean, yeah, it's a pretty big chunk to take out of the water fund.
What's in that right now?
That four eighty five, is that just a water operating? Fund zero zero two?
Yeah, so the water operating four hundred and eighty five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars.
It'd be a split between two of them. What's your opinion?
That would work. So take half out of water operating and half out of the infrastructure for this payment and payments going forward.
I'd make a motion to split that into half out of the water fund and half out of the infrastructure.
There's motion to pay for water tower repairs. Half infrastructure, half water operating is their second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
So we're just going to do the bills and that as well to include all in one motion?
Well, we'll make sure that water towers, right? Because we're going to spend close to a quarter. Hearing no discussion, call the roll, please, Lynn.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty. Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Bills as a whole.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills is their second.
That George had motioned?
Yes.
Oh, sir.
Randy seconds it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the Lynn, please call the roll one.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Motion carried. Their motion to adjourn.
Oh. Judges report.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Motion to approve the judge. Or is there a second?
Who motion?
George. Second. Motion is second. All those in favor signify by I.
I.
I pose motion carry. Now is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Kirk, motion to adjourn is their second.
Second.
Second, all in favor signify by I.
I.
I pose motion carried. We are adjourned.
And do you have one? Done. Now I'm sorry.